We're being recorded a couple of times. Is TJ with us? No, he's not with us on. Okay. So TJ, welcome. I'm going to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 25th, 2022 as written. Is there a second? TJ, is that a second from you?
I'm here, yeah.
Okay, so Jeff wasn't here yet for those minutes, so he will stand for that vote, but um. Touching on the meeting minutes from the 25th. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so I have my signed copy, so um I'm just gonna make a note that says via Zoom next to yours. And then, Joanne can get you to sign those after. And then we have uh May-June minutes with Christopher, he'll get those to us soon so we can get them on the website. I think our, we have how many, what's our timeline, Joanne? Do you know to get them on the website? Is it typically, or to make them public, it's like three months, okay, so we're.
Yeah, we gotta do a little catch up.
A little catch up. They're always the worst part of the job.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next up, we have audience participation, public comments. Do we have any? No? Okay. Um, next, we've got department reports, and I know that Dave couldn't be here, but he sent a report. Are you gonna go over that for us?
Yeah, I'll handle this for it. So yeah, Dave is on a well-earned vacation this week. So he, he sent his payroll and everything over to us, so we'll be helping him out with that.
Okay.
The first item on his agenda there is a scope of work from Weston Sampson. This is the firm that's been doing all the, the design work so far, the highway and garage feasibility study. This latest study they're looking for has to do with actual renderings of the proposed garage.
Okay.
The joint facility that has both the highway and fire facilities in it. And it would be on the salt shed site where the highway department has land. The estimated cost is a little under 6,000. So, you know, as with the other studies, the proposal for how to do this would be funded out of our capital projects account for the time being. Then at special town meeting, we actually transferred money out of the building.
So these are gonna be the as-done drawings, is that what you're?
Uh, so if you take a look on there. Take a look on there. And you can see, you know, the, the scope of work that Dave outlined.
Question, Eric. What is a Revit model?
So.
Oh, I'm not sure.
Revit base model? I think it's a 3D model, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So that's what we should expect.
Yeah, it's using Lumion rendering software, so. It'd be, uh, it'd be pretty.
Do you need, um, yes, you need a vote from us because it's coming out of capital to spend the money?
For the time being, yes. Because that, as I said, especially at town meeting, we would transfer out of their building stabilization account to cover it.
Okay, um, so I would make a motion to um to pay for, to make sure that they're wording right, um. The Weston and Sampson renderings uh outlined by the steering committee on an amount of $5,760 out of capital funds. Is there a second for discussion?
I'm trying to digest this.
Yeah, me too.
So, um, TJ, this is the money to come out of capital project funds for now, which would then come out of the building stabilization. And this is our next step for the building projects to get a rendering of the buildings that we talked about last meeting. The fire and highway together with the common building in between. But if we want to discuss, we need a second so we can talk about it.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, so thoughts, concerns, what do you guys got?
Well, I'm a little concerned that our taxpayers are gonna wanna pay for two of these buildings. When we have something that we could possibly use with a little extra, less money involved. That's some of the concerns I'm receiving from people in town, so.
So you're referring to using the current highway?
For the fire station temporarily, we can't, I don't think we can afford both tax-wise. If I'm not mistaken, the accountant told the finance board that they couldn't afford $4 million. So if there's overruns, are we gonna, you know, what are we gonna do to our tax bases? That's the first thing I would like to know. I have prices on buildings that I got already that we can purchase ourself. Steel buildings, all engineered, you know, pay for the engineering, you pay to have it put up, the plumbing, et cetera. And the buildings are $290,000 for all three of them.
Now.
Not 3 million or 4 million or whatever they've been talking back and forth, so.
Now, last time we met, we talked about a lot of the concerns and hurdles that come up because it's a municipal.
I understand, but we also can make building smaller. Leave a cold storage for, for like the excavator and stuff they don't use in the winter. But, and just heat part of 100 feet and make 30 feet open, just like regular construction comes in still.
I'm just recalling all the reasons why Highway and Fire Guy and Athlete said that it couldn't be done that way last time.
Well, I can take and show you a bunch of them, Joanne.
Here's my thought. The, so you're concerned about the sizes of, so what we're approving right now is the next step of creating the drive.
I understand that.
So.
But what I'm saying is, are you, are your taxpayers gonna allow you to build a new fire station?
I don't think we're there yet.
So you're gonna spend the money on something that you might not use is what bothers me.
I think we spent the money that we put aside on building stabilization for the drawings for these plans so that we can have a better idea of what exactly it is.
I can buy that, I, I will buy that.
Now, now, also, you got forsaken discussion. We also are applying for grants for this project. And would the state and the federal government be under the safety clause? And I've been on four of these building committees already, and I can tell you, no matter what we do, the price is going up. Now, the price of the building may be 300,000, 400,000. But now you've gotta put insulation, heating, lighting, electricity. All these things you start adding up, and you're, you're gonna come out pretty close to where we are already.
Yeah.
You know, the first building that we designed by Chaos failed, and that was for 400,000. And you're looking at the same size building that we were looking at back then. So the price is only gonna go up, Jeff, you know that, as well as the rest of us.
I understand that.
So it's, it's, you know, I don't understand making one building for both fire and highway. I don't think that's gonna work out. Uh, you're, you're clustering too much in a small area.
Um, so I guess, I think that a lot of the speculating that we're doing right now are discussions that should take place in the meetings with the OPM. And so, right now, what we are just deciding is, can, do we wanna take this $6,000 roughly out of the money that we've put aside to take this next step? So my vote for that would be yes.
I will second or I vote for, I agree with it, get the print so we can look at them.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that, that passes, um, unanimously. Thank you guys. Alright, next up, we got Sperry Road.
Yeah, uh, so I'm sure you're all familiar with Sperry Road. You know, one of the challenges that we found with it, it's just that when it comes down onto Russell Stage, there's pretty poor visibility because of some of the overgrowth and also just the angle it, it comes up. Um, so Dave has been looking at kind of a long-term solution to that. Looks, he's looking at raising up that, that portion of the road that meets Russell Stage Road, so there's some better visibility. Um, and then in the meantime, they're looking at purchasing some guardrails for that area around there. So the, the quote he provided was 4,200, I believe, for the two guardrails. And he's also looking at ordering a caution intersection ahead sign, just so that there's more kind of traffic calming measures around that intersection.
Okay, and this is uncovered by chapter 90?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, question. Which road are you raising? Sperry Road or Russell Stage Road?
Uh, TJ, I believe it's Sperry Road that's, that's gotta be raised.
I don't, I don't see how that's gonna help the situation.
That, why, that would be something we'd have to ask Dave for sure, TJ.
He's gonna sit up higher and be able to look over to the cut, TJ. You see what I'm saying?
I, I, I understand that part of it. Uh, we already expended, spent money on that mirror situation too. Uh, I don't know if that's gonna resolve it. I think, uh, you know, maybe raising the road will help. But also, I think, you know, we have to put a dangerous intersection sign up in the meantime until we figure out how we're gonna raise that road and what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, he said that's part of his plan too.
Yeah, well, I'm for that.
Yeah. Okay, um, playgrounds.
Yeah, uh, so David had been looking around for a funding source to review the blacktop out here on the playground and install a basketball court, and then also hopscotch or horse square or whatever other kind of games we want to have out there. He had only been able to find one quote, I believe you've seen it, for uh.
It thinks like about 15-ish.
It was, yeah, it's a little under 15, and then there's, as we've talked about, there's that crack ceiling that's five foot. So we have to, either the highway department can handle it themselves, or we have to figure out exactly how much footage there is. So he's, uh, like I said, he hasn't actually been able to find any other quotes for it. I did, uh, recall, we talked about getting a park grant to cover it, but that would require us to.
Yeah.
Yes.
To turn that into a park, which is not current. So we're gonna continue looking at other funding options, and of course, we'll discuss more with the review.
Yep.
Uh, and then Shepherd Road, um, so the, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's alright.
Oh yeah, Shepherd Road, yeah, I'll get to Dave's stuff also. Yeah, so Shepherd Road, uh, the ever-source issue with trucks going through there at high speeds. Uh, so Highway moved, temporarily moved that radar sign.
Yep.
I don't know if you already know that. Have heard from some folks that they'd like to see it back on Main Street. So we are gonna have to move it back soon. Uh, the other interesting thing about that radar sign is it's supposed to be actually giving us data about speed.
Yeah, that's great.
So we need to get it hooked up somehow.
Yeah.
That's something we can talk about with the chief, but we'll try to figure that out.
Okay.
Um, moving on, um. Talked about for Dave and the annual performance review back in late June. Um, I provided you with a copy of some draft goals. So I took basically the contents of that conversation and kind of formalized them into what we call smart goals. They have objectives that are specific, measurable, relevant, and time-based.
I'm just trying to find it.
I see smart goals for TA.
Yeah.
So in the first email, I sent you there on Friday afternoon.
I did not steal it, I promise. Okay.
I glanced at it already, yep.
Um, finance team's smart goals, smart goals for TA. I see. Let's see, highway, draft highway fire facilities.
I've been having an email on Friday.
Okay, that one is. That was Monday, okay, let me look for Fridays. Here's Friday. Waldron, got it. I was thinking Watson. Sorry. Okay, um.
Not yet, yes I did. I knew it was there somewhere.
Sure, inclusion of department capital need. This is great. As much as I hate writing smart goals, they're very helpful for tracking. It's one of those things that comes up and you're like, oh, I hate that acronym, but um, it makes sense. So these are much easier to measure, which will be helpful for our next uh meeting with Dave and go over his goals.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and I ran into by him as well, just to make sure there wasn't anything that he felt was achievable or anything like that. The only thing he mentioned was, you know, so in that third goal, it was really around drainage and those kind of issues. I included stuff about tree canopy.
Yeah.
He was just saying, um, you know, we really wanna get serious about tree canopy, it's gonna probably require additional funding, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to note that he had that comment, so should be aware of that.
Okay. Yeah, these look great.
So I will, uh, make sure he has a finalized copy of that. Let me know if there are any additions or anything that everyone wants to make.
TJ, you got, did you look at those?
I, I can't see them.
No, you got an email, they were emailed to you, um.
Yeah, I, I looked over them. I, I have other concerns than, than that.
Okay. Alright.
Uh, alright, and then the last item from Dave's report, uh, we have the contract finally from Palmer Paving.
Yes, this giant piece. Yeah, um, did we sign the contract? I don't think so.
Signed a notice of award.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
I know.
It was something.
Yes, performance bond in there as well.
Um, so our attorneys have reviewed this contract?
Um, you know, I actually have not gotten, heard back from Mark on it yet.
Okay.
Like, I can check him with him. This is from FERC, so.
So we can approve it contingent on, we'll just do that. Um, so make a motion to approve the contract with Palmer Paving, the amount of, um. Is it, wait, wise? Okay, sorry. Um, oh, look, it even writes it out for me, they knew. $1,690,268.50 um for the North Lanford Road improvements contingent upon approval by our attorneys, town council.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, um, so that's Dave's stuff, uh, my stuff. So, uh, this past week, um, had our monthly meeting with our finance team, so accounting, treasurer, the assessors, and also usually a member of the finance committee, but no one was able to make it unfortunately. Um, and the main purpose of this meeting was just to go over our FY22 smart goals for the finance team, make any updates. So I shared a copy with you, um, just showing, you know, what goals we've met and where we need to make further improvements. I would say the main thing is, we had a bunch of goals around actually writing down protocols for how to carry out certain financial functions. And we, while we carried out those functions, we didn't write down protocols. So that's something that we're gonna have to do in FY23.
Okay.
And then a couple of things that folks added. The treasurer said, I think we can get a little bit more aggressive about collections.
Okay.
Currently, we're somewhere in the 94 to 96 range, uh, percentage-wise, collections. And she thinks we could be up to 97 or higher, so.
Great.
So that's gonna be an additional goal, so I will write up what we heard at that meeting.
Okay.
We'll try to get, um, you know, a clear set of FY23 goals, so that team knows what they're supposed to be doing. And then, of course, you know, figuring out to what degree we can bring some of these services back in-house and what the balance is there. It's gonna be one of the big policy questions for us, so yeah.
Um, I know this is always a question, but are any suggestions on recruiting for finance on, um. I know, we have three members, we need five. Um, and I'm just thinking, like, if we're gonna be working on writing down these procedures, now's the time to add someone, you know, to be a part of it. Um, I don't know where else we can advertise for this volunteer position. Um. No, I don't know, we'd offer coffee, free cookies, something. Is that true, that too? Um. So just kind of a thought there is.
Yeah, yeah, we, so we, we still need to find somebody, we don't have any prospective people at the moment.
Cause I know.
Preferably somebody with financial background.
Correct, yeah. That would be ideal. Okay.
I, I, I would like to go back to something if you don't mind, when we were talking about the highway department.
No, I do mind. Can we wait and do it?
Sorry, but to me, I, I think we're putting a lot on the highway department. And we got drainage ditches and culverts on other roads that need to be cleaned, catch basins.
TJ, we have Dave here today, so I don't know if it is gonna make sense to have that discussion without him, um.
Hey, but I just wanted, on the back of your little mind. I'm sorry.
Yeah, my large brain.
Yes.
Okay.
I should be able to say things when I'm on this.
Yeah, you better watch yourself. Why don't you, um, reach out to Dave personally if you have any, if you have a direct concern?
Yeah, I will when I get back.
Alright. Oh, actually, Dave's on vacation, leave him alone this week, call him next week.
Alright. I'll punish him when he gets back.
There you go.
Uh, alright, so those are the finance team goals.
Yeah.
And then, so for my own goal, because I've been kind of, it's like flying blind, but I haven't had goals in place
Yeah.
since I started. Um, so I provided a copy of those. You know, broadly speaking, the goals are around finance, infrastructure, human resources management, the kind of quality of life issues in the town. Um, and I basically just, you know, I used the resilient master plan and looked at the strategies that are in there, and then added some stuff that, you know, I'm not up at that point. So, you know, they're, they're very draft, I haven't even included the finance goals in there yet.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, worked with the finance team on those, but take a look at them, look at if there's anything to add, and then I'll try to have something in place before, you know, before September.
Okay, I'm gonna write homework next to that. Got it.
Alright, um, another department update. So we've got a few issues with beavers and beaver-related flooding on North Lanford Road. Um, you know, uh, we don't really need to get into details here. You know, broadly speaking, basically, when there's a beaver flooding issue, if it rises to the level of emergency, then the Board of Health gets to make the calls to whether or not it needs to be dealt with immediately. A couple of the remedies that can be used when it's an emergency have to then be signed off on by the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
We don't have any kind of policy in place for, you know, what the commission expects or when it's really an emergency. So it's, it's just moving forward, I think we're gonna try to have some kind of policy in place. I'm gonna work with the Board of Health, Jennifer, Dick, and just try to figure out, you know, who needs to be contacted when these issues come up? What kind of information do we need before decisions can be made and have something in place? Cause it's, it's just a little chaotic right now.
Okay.
No one's totally sure who to go to with the information.
Okay, and it's clearly something that keeps coming up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a lot of beavers, so.
Yeah.
Hey, Chris, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
If, 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 uh, I, I know the area, it's part of Blair Road and that, and uh I think, you know, Springfield has to be served with a letter from our attorneys that, you know, if the road fails, they're responsible. Something in that line, cause uh, you know, if they're not gonna, you know, break up that beaver dam, then it becomes their problem.
Well, also, there's a few different dams, and one dam that was being dealt with, uh, it is on a conservation property owned by Springfield Water. And that's pretty much at the corner of Blair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll say when, um, Jennifer contacted Nicole, their watershed managers, she said, you know, we'll do whatever is necessary. We just wanna sign off from the Conservation Commission because it's conservation, it's land.
Okay.
So they're not throwing up any roadblocks, as far as I can tell.
No, they mean will do, as in they'll allow us on the property, or they're gonna pay for it?
That's, yeah, we had, we had a cross everything.
Yeah, okay.
But we also had, with that, we actually weren't even sure if it was an emergency and
Yeah.
whether or not the Board of Health had full jurisdiction, and so it's something that needs to be.
Okay.
Again, we need a policy in place.
Yeah.
Chaos.
Okay.
So that's, uh, is that enough background for you, TJ?
Well, I, you know, we've been kicking this around for a couple of months now, and uh, you know, nothing, you know, I don't think Springfield's being cooperative at all.
Yeah.
What's, so where, last time we talked to Dave, um, he was in communication with town council, with MEAD, and they were sending letter out. Um, we can ask Dave when he gets back to give us an update. Um, if we've gotten a response from that.
I, I just don't wanna see the road get washed away.
Yeah, correct. I think, no, I think there's, this are two different areas that we're talking about. I think that the original one, TJ, is a different area. Um, this is something newer. But the same idea that it's still that Springfield water land.
Well, we'll see what happens.
Alright, moving on, uh, so one other item that got discussed at the finance team meeting last week. Uh, we have this outstanding pilot payment from CICARFA.
Hmm.
Karen was able to do some digging and actually found, um, the paperwork essentially, so.
Okay.
Where we requested payment, um, so we will be able to at least try to recover that, it's about $90,000.
Okay.
Nice to have. So we'll follow up on that. Another item on here, uh, we had our quarterly report from Hilltown Community Ambulance Association. I sent the copy over. Jeff, I can't remember, I got one too. Not a lot of changes since last quarter. Oh, you did get, you're right. Not a ton of changes since the last quarter, but I want to provide that. Uh, and I know there had been some discussion about, you know, looking at our options with respect to emergency responders, so.
So I guess my question would be, I was just looking for the report. Um. Tom, do you know with the Hilltown ambulance, if that issue with staffing has been squared away?
They're working on it. I'm no longer the representative.
Okay, sorry.
But, uh, as far as I know, they're working on it.
Okay.
But, like a lot of other places, help is hard to come by.
Yeah, so the reason we were looking to, to, to look at our other options was because, um, the, I believe the agreement we had was that it was staffed 65% of the time. I could be getting that number wrong, I don't know if you know better.
66, I think.
66% of the time with paramedics, and that had not been happening. So they were looking to increase the rate, um, by quite a bit, um, in order to make that happen on their end. And all the towns said no, so I don't know where we're at. Are we not getting that 66% and we're still paying what we paid? And, you know, so there's definitely, that's still something that is, you know, a concern.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to their new executive director, let's see what the story is. I know that report had a little breakdown of.
Yeah, I, yeah. Oh, here it is. Alright, so it's, so it's giving us the total calls, and then, um, uh, it says, they responded to the paramedic level was 10 out of the 21 calls. But I could be, so their 21 calls total, sorry, 21 calls total, they responded to 16. They transported 10 and responded at the paramedic level are 10. So that's actually a bit better, if you don't care, just the 16. So. So it says 62.5%, it looks like, coverage. Question, yes?
I'm sorry to go back, but on CICARFA, did I understand you to say a pilot payment of $9,000?
He said 90.
90, that's for a full year. What about the quarterly payments that should have been, they're supposed to be quarterly?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly how this, you know, this, this was from a couple of years ago, so this was from 2021, I think.
We never got that?
No, it was, it was something that was hanging out there. And Karen had to dig through, you know, a bunch of paperwork to track it down.
From 2021?
Yeah.
How about 2022, this year, are we issuing the quarterly payments?
Um, as, as far as I know, I can, I can definitely check with, you know.
Cause that should be going out for both CICARFA and Otis Day Road.
Yeah.
It's very important that that money.
Yeah, absolutely. So another thing that came up at this finance team meeting was Carl, the assessor, you know, he shared his list of all the pilot payments, um, their status. So having to make that available.
In CICARFA, it should definitely be going up 1% per year.
Yeah.
Mm-huh.
So they should be up two percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on the Hilltown Community Ambulance Association?
No, that, that's just some kind of hanging there, and I don't, you know, we had talked about scheduling a six Hilltown meeting. To talk about it, and we just haven't, so I don't know. I feel like we should meet like yearly anyways, just like get to know each other's like boards and, you know, see if there's anything, but I don't know. Just a thought thrown that, it doesn't have to be something that's like at the top of your list, but like. At some point, it'd be nice to coordinate a meeting and have a conversation with other select boards.
I've been making up.
So is their biggest problem financial? They, they just can't pay the paramedics the money they want?
I think.
Because we didn't vote for it, is that?
As January worked first, they get more raised, so I.
Which is pretty hard to do on a contract, right?
Right.
But, I mean, all the effort, I think they put in a great effort for our town.
Yeah, they're doing good. The last three calls we've had, they've been right on the ball with us.
The problem was, Jeff, that the, the increase was something like sixty percent. It was a huge increase. And all the towns have to agree.
Right.
And so even if Blanford was like, you know, maybe we would, we could try because it's important, the other ti- the other towns that I talked to were like, no, absolutely not. So this kind of puts us back in this place where we're like, oh, you know, it's one of those regional things.
We're still gonna have coverage for some.
Exactly, yeah.
That's the.
Alright, well, we'll reach out to the other towns and see if we can figure out some kind of.
Maybe in the fall, or, yeah.
Alright, sounds good. Uh, alright, so grants, um, so I'll start with the redo applications, and this is the Regional Economic Development Organization Grants. Uh, so the town got, uh, sixty thousand dollars less some funds that went to Western Mass Economic Development Council for distributing funds to us. Um, so we, back in June, put together a forum on the website that businesses and nonprofits and institutions in the town could fill out, uh, supply funding. Um, you know, we ended up getting a total of six applications, um, totaling about sixty-eight thousand dollars. So we have fifty-four thousand dollars to dispense with. Um. And we said in that, um, posting that, you know, it's really, it's the select board's call.
Mm-huh.
It's really about, you know, are these, um, applications in line with the goals of the local recovery.
Excuse me.
Uh, local recovery, uh, rapid recovery plan that we. Um, worked on with CBPC back in the fall. And so specifically, these grant funds for projects that advance facade or physical improvements. Um, outdoor dining, um, or seating, and then also, uh, just general place making and village beautification. So we got, um, a number of applications. I'm happy to run through them. Um, and then we could make some decisions about, uh, funding these different projects.
So we, um. So if we take a look at them one by one, you have each one. So if we look at the animal hospital one, um, so that total is about three thousand. They're looking for benches, timbers, um, just basically meeting. Um, making it safer around the roadway there for pets that get loose, but also spa- spot for people to wait. Because as it works now, I don't know if you've been recently, but you have to wait outside before you can go in. They call you when you put your animals. Um, you don't have any animals?
Just my voice.
Um. So, and then, um. So that, I, I think seems to. Um, qualify for the outdoor sort of seating and beautification. Um. If we look at the next one, it's the Blanford Country Club. And they are looking for three thousand. Did I say the wrong amount for?
For three thousand.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and they're looking to upgrade the existing flagpole. Um, and do some landscaping around it, and then outdoor seating to increase their outdoor capacity. So that also fits, makes sense. Um, Blanford Fair. We've got nine thousand five hundred, um. Security fence running parallel, um, to North Street in the northern end of the fairgrounds to be replaced. Um. While the fence replacement is needed and when enhanced appearance, it cannot complete this year, so they're looking to complete that in the spring next year. So this is specifically for the fence. Now, I don't see. Um, it's not like priced out, so I'm assuming that that's just. So it says various physical plant improvements, but then he's just talking about the fence. So. I guess I'm a little confused there.
I know where fences, if they, you drive a bike.
No, it's terrible.
It's, uh, it's a fence long, big, they've given it in there.
Yep.
I'm just confused, TJ, because he, he, the, it says in there, um, that the nine thousand five hundred is for various physical plant, um. Uh, updates, but then it's just talking about the fence. I just wanna make sure that we have the information we need so that this, we can make sure this is applicable. Under the terms of the grant. Uh, okay, so if we look at the Blanford Store, they're looking for, uh, eighteen thousand. Um, they're looking to finish parking, put up barriers, signage for traffic. Tables and chairs and reciprocals. I'm not sure.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah. Um, I'm just wondering if signage for traffic.
Yeah, and I will say, uh, Jennifer did provide some documentation.
Okay.
You know, where all this funding is, so, uh. For the parking lot completion, that was estimated at, uh, a little over three thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay.
The need there was just a seal. Uh. And she had, uh, eight hundred fifty dollars for plants and some plantings around the proposed seating area.
Mm-huh.
And then for the outdoor seating, uh, she was looking at getting some jersey barriers, which I believe are.
Already there, and so are the tables and the plants.
Uh, since this re'emarsements essentially, and then signage, uh, she had estimated about eight hundred.
What kind of signage?
Oh, I think, so signage, she's talking about the sign up front, the new sign that says Blanford.
Oh, oh, okay.
So that does fit right in here. Okay, that makes sense.
They put no parking in my driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
So, so, yeah, also under that outdoor seating plan, it was about twelve thousand. She had, uh, garbage cans, picnic tables, chairs.
Okay.
All the stuff that's out there.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and the other, the other funding that we gave to the store was not, didn't have anything to do with this, correct?
Yeah, so the ARPA funds were for the kitchen and.
And lost funding, maybe?
And lost funding, yeah. Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that we're not overlapping anything.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so then we've got, um. Oh, this is, uh, for the playground, so this is the nineteen thousand for the playground. But I think, like I, I think we can reduce this one to fifteen and still cover it. Um, and so I just put in, um, all the details from the quote that, um. We've gotten from it. So we can reduce that to fifteen and take four thousand off of the sixty-seven, so brings us down to sixty-three hundred. Um, okay, so then we've got Port Memorial Library, um. This is for their fifteen thousand eight hundred. Um, they wanna do the, uh, outdoor seating area. So, uh, let me see if I can. It would be front lawn service, uh, overflow seating for store patrons, um, and then Port Memorial Community Anchor Institution WiFi. So this would be, um, evening out the lawn surface, um. Fixing some lighting, creating a barrier, um, to use particularly for towns' mobility impaired seniors. Place making project highlights the space from the tract of sign, flat patio, lawn furniture, picnic tables, and accessible surface to use. Um, additional amenities may include a bike rack, an outdoor book locker. Sounds wonderful. Um. I'm just freezing, she, of course she wrote a lot more.
Yeah, I know.
How much ARPA money do we have left?
This isn't ARPA, this is redo. But, um, TJ, so let me just do the last one, then we'll talk about the funding. Um, the last one, oh, that's the last one. Okay, so if we take off the, um. The five thousand dollars, what did I say, five, four thousand? It brings us down to sixty-three thousand eight hundred, so we, um. Are over, I need a calculator. Because I can't do math on this, but. We need to cut like roughly nine thousand, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you have fifty-four, you got sixty-three on there, right?
Yeah, so about almost ten thousand. So, um, I was thinking. If we cut a little bit off of. Each. Then we can still help everyone out. Um, not necessarily meet all their expectations, but, you know, be able to fund most of the projects. So, um, if we looked at cutting. I don't know, if we looked at cutting three thousand off the store. Um.
Yeah, so we're looking to find nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Nine thousand eight hundred.
So, yeah, so we brought that.
Out. On, on the store. Our, our, we're, we're financing the store. To do more business, but. I mean, it's, you, you've got these parking problems and all that. I don't understand the eighteen thousand. That, that just, you know.
Well, um.
I don't, I don't know where they're gonna spend it.
Christopher does.
You, you named off a couple of things, but those are normal business expansions. You know what I mean?
So Christopher has it all broken down, TJ, um, piece by piece. Um, and so the, this grant is all about, you know, outdoor, um, signage and beautification and sort of that front facade for businesses. So it does all apply to, to redo. Um, and, and he has a detailed version if you wanna look at it, but I do agree that eighteen is a lot considering that we only have the fifty-four to give out. Um, we could got it, cut it down to the fourteen. Um, which gives us the three thousand. Or, sorry, that gives us four thousand, and then we're just looking for five thousand eight hundred, um. We've already cut down the playground. We could look at, so the, the fairgrounds. We could do, what did I just say? We could, we need. Four thousand eight hundred?
Yeah, we need to, we need to find another five thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, five thousand. Uh, let's take. Can we take three thousand off the fair? And then we're looking for one thousand eight hundred, and we take that off of the library. I just don't, I'm, I'm hesitant to touch the smaller guys. Would that work? If, so if the, if the country store is fourteen, we leave club at three, library, we bring that down to, uh, thirteen. Fair, we brought down, we said we'll bring that down by. What do we need, two or three thousand for that?
Three.
Three? Then we, animal hospital is down to three, and then playground's down to fifteen. Does that get us where we need to be?
Uh, yeah, that looks like that would be all of the sixty-four thousand.
Okay. What do you guys think? Does that sound good? I don't know if the fair can still, I mean, they can replace as much of the fence as they can replace with six thousand?
Oh, I. I, I just don't understand. You know, I, I think the fair will survive with the six, that's fine.
Okay.
But I, I still, I, I just can't get my mind around the store. I mean, we're helping them to produce business.
Well, that's the whole idea of the grant, TJ, is that we're trying to help local businesses to prosper.
Yeah, but I, you know, if we're paying the full ball, you know, I, I don't know, it just, that just bothers me. That's a lot of, that's a lot of money to put into a private business.
Well, it's, so we, we did reduce it, um, but it's not our money. It's, you know, like, to answer, it's the state money that's for that. We just happen to be the trustees of, you know, of how to distribute. And in all fairness, I have to say that, that that was the one company we didn't have to hound for a redo grant to be turned in. You know, they, they turned it in first.
Yeah, no.
Information.
But my con- my concern is, once this, these monies are spent. The government's gonna do an audit. Make sure that we did it right. And. I, I don't know, I mean, when, when you come down to it, you're talking thirty thousand dollars for a small store. I, I don't know, that's, you know. I'm having a hard time in my mind looking at it and saying, is the audit gonna, uh, approve this? Or is, are we biting something here? I don't know. I, you know. I'm not a rogue scholar and I'm not a financial genius. I just, um, these are the questions that I think of.
Well, I think everything on here, is there a specific, um, item that you don't think applies to this grant?
There, there, there are a couple of things. I mean. They're expanding their business, which is, which is a good thing. But I, I can't see, you know, all this money going into expand a business to improve somebody's profit.
Well, I just. That's the whole idea of the grant, but TJ, if you can tell me, so right now I'm asking you about, uh, the parking, the barriers, the plants, the seating. Which one?
Where's the parking going to be? You know what I mean? Uh, they got room to park what? Maybe six cars? And that.
Looks worth twice on here.
I, I got it.
Okay, so that's not really a concern, the specific of the parking. So they're saying that. They have a plan for parking and they've put in the money for parking. Um. Is it the parking that you feel like doesn't apply to the grant, apply for this grant?
I, I don't think that applies to the grant. I, I mean. It's, it, it's expansion for one, but, you know, it has nothing to do with the building and the store in itself.
Well, I tell you what, we already cut off four thousand of what they requested, so we actually already cut off the parking. So we're just now paying for the outdoor seating and the signage.
Okay, well, you know, I, I'm just hoping it won't bite us in the end, that's all.
Oh, yeah, I agree, and I think that, um, you know, Christopher's got that end with collecting invoices and, and whatnot to provide for an audit.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright, so, um, do we need to do these individually, do you think?
Um, probably wouldn't hurt.
Okay. So you might just have to help me with numbers again. So I would make a motion to approve, um, fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, out of the redo funds for the Blanford Country Store, Blanford Bistro, um, outdoor dining project. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh, make a motion to approve three thousand dollars, uh, out of the redo funds for the Blanford Country Club Outdoor Enhancement Project. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve fourteen thousand dollars to the Port Memorial Library for their outdoor improvement and accessibility project. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve, um, six thousand dollars to the Blanford Fair for their various, I'm sorry, for their, uh, fence repair project. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to use three thousand dollars to Blanford Animal Hospital for their outdoor seating and beautification project. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve fifteen thousand, uh, of the redo funds for town playground, um, the paved play space at town hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion on favor?
Aye. Aye.
Awesome. Alright. Park Trust, um, landscaping bids. Mima.
Oh, yes, Mima, real quick. Um, so, yeah, so, uh, I spoke with Mima's Regional Coordinator, uh, last week. Um, they are gonna take a tour through town hall at some point.
Okay.
Their grant administrator, um, they're, they're anticipating having some sub-grants through FEMA, uh, for a generator for emergency shelters.
Okay.
We're not exactly an emergency shelter yet, but Chief and I have been talking about this for a little bit.
Okay.
Um, however, they could be designated as something that approximates that and allows us to apply to grant funding. Um, so I've looked in, uh, our electrical inspector, who's been working with an engineer to make sure that we have the right generator and that we, uh, you know, all the power needs are met. Um, so we'll continue.
Okay, great.
Um, so, yes, the park.
Linda, do you wanna come on up for the park stuff?
I'm fine right here.
You're fine there, okay. Anyone else? No one else from historicals here, just you?
Uh, Katie moving on.
Oh, okay. Um, alright, so, um, we put out an RFP for work at, um, bicentennial as well as work for, um, Watson Park, um, maintenance and, um, improvement of the flower beds. We received two proposals, one from Kristen Thomas in town, um, she owns Taking Root Garden Design and another from a company in Westfield, LB's Property Maintenance. Um, so we have, um, Kristen's proposal is broken out year by year. LB's is just broken out total price, um, which is a little bit of a difference. And, um, Kristen did note that, um, the uh, trees and shrub, shrubs, that part, it would not be included in her proposal. Um, the area on the stone wall, rebuilding of the stone wall, removing stumps and then the power washing or removing dead trees for bicentennial. Um, so Linda, I saw your email about the bicentennial and, um, we both had the same concern about the price. So what my thought was, I would love to reach out to Sarah, um, and ask her about the bicentennial trust and how much interest that trust makes a year. So because what we're, we're actually looking at the three thousand six hundred for the first year, three thousand eight hundred the second year, if we're looking at, um, Kristen's quote, um, because it wouldn't be the ten thousand, because we don't want to deplete it, um, either. Obviously, that wouldn't make sense. Um, so I guess, I guess the question is, what does it make a year in, in interest? Is it something feasible? Do we need to just cut down, you know, what we're asking? Um, and I guess I should back up. The reason I'm looking more at Kristen's is the detail of her bid. Um, I know that historical, it's so, it's so important that, you know, whoever's doing this is very knowledgeable and part of culture. Um, very aware of the design and the historical significance of the, the flower beds. Um, and if you read, I'm sure you've read through, it's, it seems like she's, you know, more than qualified for the position. Um, and she's local, which I think is pretty cool. Um, but that was the one concern was that price for bicentennial. If you compare the prices for Watson Park, LB's is fifteen thousand five hundred total and hers is the thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy total. So that's not so much of a concern, but, um.
Well, and, and I guess one of our questions would be is, how much design do we need to improve on? And we already have a design for both parks.
Yeah.
It seems like we need more of a gardener or somebody who's gonna maintain what's existing there.
So it looks like she's saying for Watson, um, she's talking about doing the two front beds out there and she was saying that they're, they needed to be, um, she's, I was just trying to see if she said she needed to add anything. Remove weeds, saplings, reestablish proper edges, divide as appropriate, prune shots, remove brush. Um, oh yeah, select new plants to fill in the gaps. So there were some new plants going in at the gazebo and some new perennials at the front entrance bed, which is why the first year was a little bit more expensive.
Well, and my question, are they historical perennial? Are they, what would it?
So that would be something you should work with her, um, and she, and I, she's totally open to having that conversation. Um, but then as far as bicentennial, um, I don't know if there's much about adding anything.
I just think it's, we only got about ninety-seven hundred dollars in there right now, and if you're gonna take thirty-six hundred out of it, that's about a third, that's kind of a tough place to leave that.
Exactly.
Personally, I, yeah.
So she was looking at adding some shade tolerant perennials for the center garden, um, to accompany the existing hostas. So we could, um, we could ask her to hold off on adding anything and just do the cleanup and maintenance of bicentennial. Um, and then we can talk to Sarah about what kind of money we really have to spend yearly at bicentennial and go from there.
Yeah. Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, so we could approve, um, I'm just trying to think of the wording to approve this, um, we could approve Watson, so she can get started on Watson. And then we can, can we do that though, since we have two bids legally?
I think we should be okay, but I can check the council.
So we proved just half of it and then?
It's two separate ones.
And then revisit bicentennial?
Yeah.
Okay, does that work for you guys? Okay, um, TJ, questions on that?
Oh, it sounds to me.
Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the, um, scope of work for the park landscape garden rehab for Watson Park from Taking Root Garden Design, the total, um, three-year amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Um, is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Um, on favor?
Aye.
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 So if we can just find out, Christopher, from, um, Sarah, what she thinks we should spend yearly and then we'll go back and revisit that with Kristen. And so that would be on, um, action for our next. Look at us plugging along, alright.
Getting there.
Contract.
Yeah, I just want to interject one thing, uh, that L and B there, uh, they do much damage. Uh, I don't think they're into horticultural or the bicentennial part.
Okay.
You know, I, I wouldn't, you know, I, they work for me, do work for me, but you know, I don't think they're, they're into that, uh.
More just land, landscaping.
Yeah, you know, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got contracts, insurance, IT support.
Uh, yes, um, so I'll just go over these real quick. Uh, so insurance, um, Maya reached out, uh, to get an updated list of our scheduled property coverage, et cetera. So I'm working with the various town departments to make sure we have that list, which is important because we'll be using it for our capital improvement plans starting fall.
Yes.
We'll get all that squared away and then we should be hopefully good to, um, make our payment for annual payment for Maya before August first and walk into the state office after doing that.
Okay.
I'll be working, I'll be speaking with them this week about that. On IT support, um, so we do have a new service contract that Nova submitted us. Um, I need to speak with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission because we actually, uh, get our IT services through their collaborative. I don't have any paperwork or any details on how that collaborative works.
Okay.
Shop around or anything like that, um, so I'll be meeting with them this week on that. Um, Shannon, I believe is on the line.
Um, before we move on.
Oh, yeah.
Can we go back? Mary brought up something that's, I think, important for Watson Park. They're, they're not going to do the, um, trimming of the stone walls. Is that not gonna be included in it?
Uh, the exposed stone wall is not part of this. No, we've actually had, um, uh, Ackley, nope. Tracy Allen, someone's brother, Tracy has been working on.
Jeff's brother.
I don't know.
Has been working on clearing the stone wall up there. So actually, it's getting, it has, is getting cleared. But that whole, the project of the stone wall is definitely something that is still on our radar. It's just not included in this, no. Because that, and that, we're also looking at rebuilding the stone wall, like we've done down here, you know, with these two parts. And that's, I think, a different company, a different, you know, expertise, yeah. Question.
Could you also say that in your capacity as a trustee for Watson Park, we approved this some nature? Not as the board is selecting?
We say that.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So will you be overseeing the work?
Um, well, my thought was, I'm actually, I'm glad you brought it back to us. I was gonna have, so, um, we're gonna, Christopher would together a contract. And then if you could make contact with Kristen and maybe meet with her and then you can have that conversation about perennials and historical, you know, value. Um, then that would be, I think, ideal, um. I don't know how we've done it in the past. Honestly, we oversee the funding, we don't so much oversee the work. Um, if historical wants to oversee that and then touch base with us if you have any concerns or questions, does that work?
Yes, because there were a lot of plants that were torn out and were supposed to be saved from the last
Yeah.
redo and they weren't, they were never brought back or.
And I did have that conversation with Kristen, so she's aware that historical has, um, you know, a lot of input to, to add to this project. So I think it would be great if you guys met and talked, okay.
And excuse, excuse me, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, I raised my hand and I didn't get a response. This is Katie. I just wanna be sure on this, uh, bid for Watson Park that the hedge that backs up to, um, I guess it's Hebert's House now, is also not trimmed. We, we had a landscape architect who told us years ago, as did the arborist we hired, that that should be a boundary. So I just wanna be sure that, it sounds like Kristen's very open, uh, to our suggestions and thoughts, uh, because we've been working on this for a long time. I just wanna be sure that that does not get taken down.
Yeah, that is not actually in the, um, scope of work, Katie. It is, um, the two front entrance beds, the three gazebo garden beds and then just, uh, watering instructions for whoever's gonna be, um, watering, which would be, I guess, dougie on a regular basis.
Okay, well, that, that's great. I didn't get a chance to, to see the bids and, uh, I'm assuming that when you voted to approve this, um, that there's sort of an informal agreement that, um, I think you said Kara, that she's, uh, very happy to talk with us. I just wanna be sure because even though we talked to the last person, uh, it was not really followed. So we just don't want to have a repeat of that. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, so we have Shannon here.
Uh, yeah, so.
Thank you, Shannon.
Sure.
So, so before we get to the Shepherd Farm stuff, um, somewhat related, we have a contract from PVP, so our contract amendment from PVPC for their main street inventory work.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure, maybe it didn't fit your package, but.
Yes, right here.
Okay.
Yep, so this is, um, the service, uh, it extends it through December twenty twenty-two. So I'm gonna sign that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, you don't need a motion for it, do we? No.
Uh, moving on to the moment, we'll get back to Shepherd Farm stuff. Uh, so just a quick update on the situation with the assessors. Uh, so we've gotten the proposal from Regional Resource Group. Right now they're working at risk with no contract in place. They said that's fine, as long as there's a good way to find a long-term solution here. So they sent over a proposal, um, ultimately talking with Dr. Hobson, you know, we're gonna have to do an RFP. Um, we are kind of expecting that Regional Resource Group would be the only vendor based on past experiences with that. Uh, so we are, we're gonna pull together a scope of work.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, Dr. Hobson's settling in as the chair. He's, he was formally elected last week, so.
Okay. Do we have to, do we have to do a contract with R D right now or are we?
No.
You said they're okay going month to month?
But they're, for the moment, they're okay, working at risk using the original scope.
Okay.
That they had, so.
Okay.
We need to get a contract in place soon, but we have to go through the RFP.
Got it, okay.
So that's where we are with the assessors. Um, real quick, moving to the planning board, uh, so we have vacancies since Mike Cutchins resigned. Um, I'm gonna reach out to PVP C about that. I believe for the moment TJ is the alternate.
Okay.
Uh, not, excuse me, not vacancy on the planning board.
Yeah, that's. On the PVP C.
Commissioner, yeah, exactly. So right now TJ is the, is serving as the PVP C commissioner for Blanford.
Okay.
Uh, okay, ongoing projects, uh, highway fire garage, um, I started wrapping some frequently asked questions posted on the website.
Yeah.
Distribute their newsletter. Uh, the chief recently got back to me with some updates on those, so.
Yeah.
I'll go over those and, and finalize them if you take a look at that. Um, I put all the questions kind of upfront, see if you have questions you'd like to add that we should provide an answer to, um, when we're, we're speaking with the public, I'd be happy to add anything.
I think the questions are right on. Um, I was just thinking of adding a bit more to the number six. I see you got the picture there, but just some explanation of what, you know, maybe even from Sarah, what we have done. Um, we could get a, we have put some money into it, not a lot, because we're, you know, nervous. Um, and then maybe just adding something there from the building inspector about the status of the building and, um, his thoughts.
So I will try to update those and incorporate the chief's changes and get those posted fairly shortly. Uh, national opioid settlement, so this is something that Wendy was working on when she was here.
Yeah, we got big bucks, huh?
Uh, we got the check today, sixty-five dollars.
Nice.
Um, so I, I reached out to, I reached out to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. You know, we got, we received some information from, uh, Reps, uh, Pig and Tally. And he basically said, you know, these small towns really need to pull these funds so that they can actually get something.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty-five dollars and we're gonna cut it, so.
So my guest name.
No, I, this one, our.
On, on the original information that came from city's office, it was broken out in an unusual fashion. Each, um, vendor, if you will, had the town and the amount of money. So that we were gonna get money from three different sources and there was more than sixty-five dollars. So which, which of the participants sent us the sixty-five dollars?
Uh, I can check what, uh, you know, the name that was on this check, but, um, you know, it's been going through a law firm that's, you know, I don't know how much of it they.
Oh, they get a fee?
Probably, so, um, I know other towns have gotten more, I think twenty-five hundred was the estimate I saw for Chester, for example. So not every town has as little money as we do, but, um, nonetheless, it probably makes sense to try to pull resources.
Yeah.
And get something out of that, so, but yes, I will, I will check on that.
Thank you.
Uh, and I've also looped in Jennifer, so she's aware, so she can have some input on, you know, how we're using those funds. Um, okay, more planning and commissioning, uh, conservation commission stuff. So we have, uh, this idea floating out there for a while about some kind of shared vision for conservation, uh, that's planning and zoning. Um, you know, I've seen it in a few different forms, whether it's shared between towns, literally shared between the departments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I put together an extremely rough job description based on some positions that are already out there. Um, I met with Paul last week about it, um, and I know I sent, take your copy as well.
Okay, yeah, that's what's asked, okay.
Um, and it's, you know, it's still in very rough draft form, we're still talking about it.
Okay.
I'll keep you updated.
Could I talk about it?
Oh, yeah, please.
Come up.
Come on up, come on down.
I think there's some mystery in this. It goes back, I guess, over two years ago when I came to the board and we asked for help with this. There were so many of us that were in the right, and then myself, we agreed to get PVP C to help us, you know, it's great. And then, uh, we talked some more about it a little over a year ago when Josh came in. And at that stage, and now, I think, Ed and I, Sarah, they're pretty conversant, or what goes on.
Okay.
But we really need help on, when it comes up, is it solar or marijuana?
Okay.
And that's important.
So specifically, yeah.
We don't even pay for that because we didn't know it was solar or marijuana. But at that point, we're not even saying that, that's what we really need, is some clarification, because if we were, Ed was doing an amazing amount of work, working there behind, uh, we put together that.
Wow.
And it's got everything, band board for each rule of regulation.
That's great.
Subdivision wins, the bylaw, the zoning bylaws. And when we brought that up to Josh, it was, yeah, then he started talking about this share.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's not what we need, is what we said.
Okay.
And now it's back to you.
Okay.
When I talked to Chris, unfortunately, he's coming into the panel end. I expressed my concerns about his budget. And I don't think there's such a person for thirty thousand dollars a year, which works out to about thirty bucks an hour for the number of hours. It's gonna be the next burden conservation, the next burden, the next burden zoning, and then we're gonna share it. The next burden zoning. And then we're going to share it. In total, I'm not very much in favor of that.
Okay.
I don't think it's what we need. And I think we also have to start looking at that. One of our members is Sarah Simpson, and she does all her bylaws. And she's really good at it, not bylaws, our minutes. She's really good at it. And her term is up next year. And when she leaves, there's nobody going to be able to do this. So we're going to definitely need somebody to do it. When I looked at it, I mentioned this to Chris and said, you've got to have somebody. It's an aside, but I said, South Creek is now advertising for a board secretary.
Interesting. Okay.
I love seeing the ads in the Penny Saver. They're in the Penny Saver.
Westfield paper.
The Westfield paper. And I don't really get the numbers, but you're saying eighty bucks an hour. And it's for nineteen hours a week. Similar to what you were talking about. So in my mind, I don't know if that's what we have to do, but I think it's a good thing. But I guess as a final aside is kind of took me back when I saw, well, so now we're not going to, we'd be happy to pay, not happy, but we would be willing to pay thirty thousand for this.
And not a stipend.
And not a stipend. And we're short people. And when you're, why is it we have such a hard time setting boards? I mean, it was really hard to get people to be volunteers.
Yeah.
And I think we're going to have to realize that. And I think you also have to look at whether the water condition came up or new assessors came up. There were contenders for that. And also the, what's the name called?
Peter Lake Ward. You know, it's a whiteboard.
Yeah. A municipal whiteboard. So they're all getting stipends. So maybe that's the thing.
So we.
Volunteers, but you gotta also understand the most important thing is, like I said, I think Edna and I and Sarah, they really handled the normal area tuning stuff. I think both Edna and I are going to be aged out. We're, we're both.
So.
Got two years, so something has got to be done. You have to make some plans for this.
So, um, that's a big part of, so I brought this back up to Christopher. Um, so it was me that brought it back up. And I brought it back up because, um, a major concern we have is the burnout of our volunteer boards who have been asked to do so much because of the solar and marijuana situations in the last five years or so. Um, we definitely, we have talked about the stipends. Um, and that is something that we looked at, I think in the budget this year, we looked at how much it would cost us to do something. Yeah. Um, but our, our thoughts with this position would be to take some of the burdens of for conservation, maybe, um, having to be, you know, somewhere during the day if people are working and we need someone to do, you know, a si- a sidewalk. Um, the specifics of the, the detailed requirements that, that these, uh, like the, the, the solar and the marijuana, these things are so particular. And so, I mean, I can't even begin to imagine. I know what you got, you guys are going through a ton of work, um, and don't necessarily have all the background that, that is necessary, is volunteers that are volunteering for this. Um, so the idea was to start sort of take the weight off of volunteers by having someone come in and do some of the heavier lifting. And allowing the volunteer boards to be more, to, to, to function more like select board functions where it's we are a voting board, you know, we're making decisions, um, where you're doing less of the light work. Um, so that's sort of where we are coming from with this. And then the other big element of this was that we needed some serious help with, um, someone advocating and managing our, um, our talking, whatever, back and forth, our conversations with Springfield Water. Um, and that's sort of another element. That might be a whole separate thing, but there, that's something that is ongoing. And we, we really need someone that knows what they're doing to help, help us with those conversations. So, um, I hear you on the not wanting someone because you guys are managing. I'm also concerned. I, I mean, I have concerns. We talked about finance. How do we, how do we get people to do these, these jobs is a huge concern. Um, and I get you guys put so much of your own time and energy into it, and we, we certainly value that. And it's not, it's definitely not something I want you to think that we're overlooking. Yes.
I think one of the most insightful things that you said is you're not going to be able to find a person that is adequately, um, capable of.
Of all of the, yeah.
Conservation. We have that approach right before Dallas, like with another town that wants to share conservation resource. Where it costs about a third of, you know, the salary thing that you were talking about. There's someone that was well versed in conservation. That understood the forms, regulations, could do a site survey, right? Somebody off the street could not do a site survey at that level. If you were on site, it's just not possible. And I think finding, sharing a resource with neighboring towns, specific to the board that you're trying to support, is really the way.
So as opposed to creating one position that helps with all land management?
To, to, to add to that, I think, you know, the wellness protection act is, is so unique and complicated. That you, you really need a dedicated person who's well versed. They, you know, to find somebody who's got the capabilities to address all the things that are in this list, I, I really think.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we can certainly revisit. I, I, I also hear what you're saying about clerical and like wanting someone to come in and do that. Board secretary. I don't think that's a bad idea. Um, I don't know, maybe that would help lighten the load and help to get more people to want to volunteer if they weren't having to do that. Cause I know doing the minutes is a terrible job and to not get paid for it. It's, it's terrible.
Sarah Simpson, uh, actually does the minutes for zoning. And she gets paid.
Yeah, that's funny. Yeah.
Yeah, she does it for us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I, I think the other concern I had with that person coming in is there's so much going on right now. This person that's coming in, you think is going to be up at the top. She's going to have, either she's going to have to learn. I think an example of that might be that lawyer from missing asking these questions.
Yeah.
With Bellthor and, and the, what they call it, the Dash Holdings.
Can Dash.
Deliverance, Can Dash Holding. They were suggesting that they hold in public meeting and publish it and send notices to the partners. And the strength of communication, Chris is saying, no, when they come in for a special permit, that's part of the process. That we do public hearings, that that's because we've now approved basically their concept of what you're going to do. And now we have to notice, notify all the towns involved with the others and so on, anybody in town. This is what's happening. This lawyer is trying to tell us that, well, it's a state requirement, but we're meeting state requirement by doing it at the special permit level. And, and as far as Can and Dash Holdings is concerned, that, that, that's a whole number of canned words. I think you just said that, that somebody advised us personally, that they've now submitted a special permit for that. But we have to go back both at the conservation level and on a special permit. Their new plans are a major change. So we're back reviewing all of that again.
Okay.
With three houses, and having another open hearing.
Yeah.
With the publics and everything's changed, folks. So we have to satisfy ourselves before we do that. What they're doing is logical. And with Chris, Chris is kind of in the middle of all this, because the lawyer went to do.
Yeah.
I've never even heard of this lawyer.
Yeah. Well, it, well, and to clarify, I think they were, they were talking about, uh, meaning they need to hold to meet their state licensing requirements.
I'm saying that that is net when they come.
Uh, so you're saying.
The way it works is they come first, you get a host degree. Then they go to the state CCC. And they get everything approved, they get a temporary license, then they come to us. Well, we have to zone, make sure the building in the spot is right. Then they come to us with this thing. And the public hearing, and that's, you would not have a public hearing for the Can and Dash Holdings before we've even renewed, because it might not happen.
Yeah.
So you're meeting state requirements when they fulfill the needs of a special permit, you are by. But not the way this lawyer is.
So I think, um, you know, we can definitely take that into consideration. Part of our thought was that if we combined the job, we, we were creating a more, um, you know, desirable job for someone as opposed to something that we're looking for, you know, eight hours a week or something. Um, but we can go back to the drawing board and see, you know, how we can better help. Because it, conservation, zoning and planning, I think are our three focuses for, um, how we can help you guys out right now.
Well, other towns that can't, they only have maybe ten hours for a conservation portion. We were approached, um, last summer by a town that wants to share a resource. Because they, they're, they're feeling the same thing. Well, we can only give this person ten hours, twelve hours. That's what we need to find, to reach out and have a collective of towns, where you're paying for one resource. You know, they go to the meetings, takes the notes, goes out, save for planning, save for zoning. So you have someone that specializes in that field.
Question, Mary?
Um, not a question, but just an observation. It is not easy to juggle the requirements of two different towns. When, and they are going to be different. Our, our conservation is different from somebody else's conservation.
Well, the big news about that, Mary, is this conservation, we have a very strict set of rules. It's the same ratings down in Massachusetts that we have to follow the protection act.
Okay.
So for us, there may be some small nuances in Stanford, but really it's the same job regardless of what town in Massachusetts. Even part of the town in Connecticut, we have different areas, but Massachusetts.
So zoning, you were saying zoning, zoning pays their secretary or their clerk?
They, whenever they, they need somebody, they get Sarah to go in.
So there's funding and zoning.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Low line items. So maybe even just in terms of funding a line item for planning, first, for clerical would be the start, right? And then whoever is on the board in that position taking minutes, would that be helpful start?
I think for right now, we're okay.
Okay.
Because Sarah is there.
Yeah. But like you said, she's up in a year. So we're thinking about, you know, when we're thinking about budget for next year, maybe we put something for a clerical position. Okay. Okay. Well, we appreciate your input. Thank you, guys. All right.
And then, uh, so we kind of already, you know, the Bellthor stuff. All right, I think now we can turn to Shepherd Farm question. I think I fit from my.
Okay.
So.
I love talking about Shepherd Farm. We talk about it all the time for years and years now. Brings me so much joy.
It looks like Shannon saw what that's on P V P C.
Thank you, Shannon. So, um, my understanding is we're, we're having the conversation tonight about lands, uh, swapping land out for conservation. Am I wrong or no?
Yes, that's part of it.
That's part of it. Okay.
Yeah, Linda, I don't know if you want to kind of speak to why you wanted to restart the conversation, but.
Well, it, it just seems like, as you said, you're out there, there, we had talked about Shepherd Farm forever. And so, um, it seems like we either need to do something or walk away from this. And I would like to see us do something. We, you know, let, when Peter Milford and I worked several years ago, for a piece of land that we can swap with conservation. We found a piece right over here, uh, behind the fairgrounds that the town owns. And a, a, all you need to do is put that into conservation, and that would free up five acres of land around the farm. So you could either sell it, you could lease it, you could rent it.
Yeah.
Do something with it.
I remember that. Do you remember why, what happened there with?
Um, Mick Brennan was looking at it with a lawyer. And I don't know where it ever went. It's, it's no longer on the board. So.
Okay.
It, it's just getting it approved that we can make that switch. And I, you know, wanting conservation to be part of that is that, are they okay with that? Switch.
Yeah.
Do, do, do we even know if that's allowable? I mean, with the, with the conservation restriction that John property, which is our, my, so.
And I, I believe that's what Nick was working on.
Yeah, I think it, that's what was, we were told Dick beforehand, was find a viable property to switch. And so that's what they had done. And then we kind of just, it stopped there for some reason.
And that would make it a conservation piece out behind the Watson Park, that you can give you additional walking area, trail areas. You know, it's.
Cause the, the, the way, the all conservation restrictions are set up a little differently. But that one, um, the restriction is that is held by Massachusetts B C R, Conservation Recreation. And, um, I I'd be interested to see what their reaction would be to doing something like this. I don't know if anybody's talked to them.
Okay.
Deal with a, a woman who comes out once a year.
Oh.
Looks at the property and Sasha Oliver.
Okay.
So, uh, it'd be interesting to see what their reaction to that concept.
It looks like, um, Shannon can speak to that. Go ahead, Shannon. Thank you. I just wanted to jump in because I had spoken with Mick when I was preparing the inventory for him and also working on helping to draft the narrative for the one stop to make sure that I had all the facts straight. And what he had told me was he had contacted someone at the state and they were going to come out and look at the two properties. And that was right about early spring of twenty twenty. So that, that was my understanding, um, that, that's kind of where the conversation had gotten to. And it wasn't that anything was, you know, told that it was not definitive to do it, but, um, it just every, like everything else stopped with early COVID. That's what Mick had, had shared with me. That's helpful. Thank you.
I was, I was wondering here, we have abandoned property, we have, uh, tax taking going on. Uh, we have, we have a lot of, uh, things and where are we with this? And is there a way that we can work with this to help the Shepherd Farm, you know, find property to swap off with?
Well, it sounds like we might already have a piece, TJ. It, it sounds like we have to, um, reconnect with the state and have them come out and take a look at both, both of the pieces to see if it'll work.
So, so could I just ask?
Sure.
So is the concept that some, some entities in town feel that the right thing to do is to tie our lot by acres of land with the house and the buildings and so.
So, um, that's a good question. The next part that we had done with Shepherd Farm was we had attempted to do a feasibility study because the last time we talked about it, the, the, um, overall agreement was that we had no, we had no idea what to do with it. And we all really didn't have any opinions on what to do with it because we didn't feel that we had the knowledge or know-how. So that was the reason we were doing a feasibility. Um, so there were sort of those two things going on. Um, but we did not get that grant. So, um, I reached back out to Christopher and asked if we could take a look at trying to get on, apply for another grant to go ahead and do that so that we could have an idea of really what we should be doing on this property.
Yeah. And, and so I ended up having a conversation with someone from, uh, one stop, the, you know, the grant, um, just to get a sense of, you know, why didn't this go through? And their feeling was just that the grants, you know, they missed, they're really about economic development. And it wasn't clear to them that this was really an economic development project. Um, you know, I think Josh included something about housing potentially at the site. But just didn't rise to the threshold that they were looking at. Um, so they did point us towards, you know, there's, um, other, other grants out there, uh, you know, conservation for small communities, um, you know, so we, it's, it's a little tough because we kind of need to decide at least roughly which direction we want to go with that property before we start applying for grants. because we kind of need to decide at least roughly which direction we want to go with that property before we start applying for grants. Um, but there's certainly things out there that are not economic development centered that we can pursue.
I mean, it, it's what I asked the question. I mean, I, I heard a couple of years ago that there was some plot about, you know, loaning from housing out there, elderly housing or something like that, which just brought the conservation commission collectively is, uh, you know, as a, as a, what, just geographically.
Sure.
Based on the infrastructure, then it's not there. Um, you know, you, you said even a, a concept, you think.
I don't recall. Talk, Linda, did you have something?
Well, um, I think it was maybe three years ago, we had a family that wanted to purchase it.
Yeah, that was a while ago. Yeah.
And they wanted five acres. So that's where we came up with the five acres.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm, I'm not interested in making a senior housing project up here. I, I would like to see the town get some income from this property.
Yeah.
And, a, a, and if I can just chime in, um, I don't believe that any kind of housing would be allowable with the conservation restriction. And hopefully Shannon can shed a little light on, um, sort of the historical value. But we, you know, there is the land. Uh, when we started work on this, we hired a, um, a forester who, uh, submitted a report, uh, went around, did a cruise of the land to talk about, uh, or to show what kind of stands of trees were there. Uh, there was potential income, um, from doing some logging. We had a, um, a, a preservationist, uh, come in to talk about what was in the house. We had, uh, an expert from Stourton, Dennis Pickard came up and looked at the, those things. And that, all of that is, I believe, included in Shannon's, uh, work on the inventory form. Um, and so I, I think that, that there is this kind of misconception. We have the house and then, and the outbuildings, and then we also have, uh, the land. And, um, there, there, we've, we requested repairs, um, on the house. Um, gosh, some time ago and never heard what happened. And so we, we need, in a sense, somebody who can do maybe a little bit of, um, of, uh, work to at least hold on to the building. Um, but anyway, Shannon, you, you're more, you have much more of the background in terms of the historical, um, impact.
Well, everything, I, I did share the inventory form that we submitted to the Conservation Commission, the Historical Commission and the Select Board. Everything that I learned about the building from research and from speaking with the Historical Commission, um, is in that form. And I tried to put as much in it as I could also about things such as the land survey with the trees that were there um, and the assessments that Katie mentioned. I also, I know Christopher, you have a copy of the narrative that I sent to Josh when he was putting the One Stop application together. And, um, I'm not sure what that final application looked like because it went directly through the town. But we talked about different scenarios, um, with, you know, pointing at kind of trustees of reservation type properties where they've used historic resources like that to draw people to the site, whether it's residents or guests to a town. Um, potential for recreation, that there, there could be different scenarios beyond, you know, that didn't really involve knocking down the building and creating a neighborhood, which as I was involved in the Resilient Master Plan, I know the infrastructure's not there. Um, and it's also conservation land that, you know, a lot of the land needs to be protected. So, um, I'm not sure if that adds to this conversation. But, um, I, it did seem, we, we did a preliminary application for the One Stop in the first round. And they did pass the application through to the second round, said that it met the standards to go through the full application process. Um, I was, the person who told me that it wasn't funded, mentioned that that first round, a lot of infrastructure projects were really what, you know, were determined as priority and needed to, to get the funding. But, um, yeah, there's, it's, I'm glad, Christopher, at least that you spoke with someone at One Stop and they gave you some feedback to hopefully, you know, give guidance that, but they did feel that the project had potential to meet at least the standards of their application process. So. That's all I've got.
And, and I think also, um, you know, some time ago, we had interest, uh, for, um, some of the local colleges to come up and, um, you know, spend a, a classroom session staying at the building, maybe even overnight, looking at the flora and fauna. There was discussion about, uh, the, the barn, uh, area, uh, making an indoor skating rink. Um, the Boy Scouts, I know, went out and planted some trees there. Um, there was a discussion, uh, from the Mennonites about having a community garden. So there, there are some, some, um, possibilities that we were looking into. Uh, it took a long time to get, uh, response and support from, um, I guess it was maybe DCR, but I could be wrong. Uh, maybe Dick, uh, I think that's Dick Gates talking. Uh, he may, uh, know who that was. But, um, you know, we had to do different forms and we submitted information. So, uh, that may be something to consider as well.
And it's certainly, we, with the National Register determination process, the Mass Historical Commission for a single building, National Register nomination, they want something that's pristine inside and out. So it doesn't quite meet that threshold. But there's examples all throughout the Commonwealth that just because something doesn't rise to the level of National Register building, doesn't mean that it's not incredibly locally historically significant, which is what we tried to convey in the inventory form. Regardless of what happens to the property, it's tied very, you know, strongly to the history of Blanford back to the late seventeen hundreds. So I'm happy I was able to work on that part of this.
Um, so I think, you know, part of what came up too was, you know, Katie, we're talking about repairs. And so for the Select Board, we discussed looking at, for a roof be, repair, you know, a big concern for us, for us was, well, why do we want to put money into Shepherd Hill right now? We don't really have any plan for it. It's not bringing any income in. You know, and, and that's where we, we've sort of spun this around was, you know, we, we kind of want to know what's going to happen next and if it's worth for us to invest in or not.
You still gotta fix it so it doesn't fall in.
Right, and I, I, I get that. Yeah, I get that. But I mean, even just putting a tarp on the roof, if there's a hole in the roof, it's just gonna start rotting everything inside. So I, I hear what you're saying, Kara, but, you know, at some point, um, you know, i- i- if saving buildings, you know, like the White Church and other buildings in town, we, we've got to make some sort of a decision. And there is, uh, we were hoping to get some forestry money, um, you know, maybe there's money. You know, I haven't, I, I'm not privy to the solar and the marijuana and so on. But, um, I, I think that if we can move forward on the, maybe further about the feasibility, that would be good. But I would think that somebody could go, I mean, we took away the, the old, um, uh, external fire escape because people could have had access. There's plywood on the windows so that, uh, um, people can't get in. Um, so there obviously is work to do. We've done, people, volunteers have done work there, um, several times. Um, so, yeah, I did, but whoever that voice was that said, w- we've got to protect it so it doesn't fall in until we make that decision. I, I would agree with that.
Okay, um, so I don't know. I mean, again, this is what Shepherd Farm discussions do. We get back.
So it just strikes me that somebody from the town has got to get in contact with the right people at the state. At DCR, whatever agency, and, and have a conversation about what is allowable with that property under the current conservation. Those documents are very lengthy, uh, very detailed about what, what's allowable and what isn't. And that's probably the first place for somebody to start to determine what is allowable.
Yeah. Okay. I know, that's, that's, I don't know. I wish we had, you know, some more, more direction.
Do you want, I could make contact to the person that I, that I've been, you know, with. At DCR, who I meet with out there once a year, look at the property and she doesn't expect me that nothing is happening there that shouldn't be, and those kinds of things.
And maybe we could, maybe we could find out who the person was that Mick had spoken to, who was going to come out and then COVID. Um, it might be the same person that Dick's talking about, um, uh, because it's dealing with the house, but it's still the conservation restriction. Um, you know, that might be a, another way in if we can put our heads together on it.
Now, look back at my notes from when I spoke with Mick and see if I wrote down the name. I know he sent me some emails or forwarded me some emails, so I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay.
I think we should send somebody out to look at the roof on that house and give us an idea of what we're looking at, because I agree with Jeff, if we don't fix it, we're gonna lose it.
Okay. Yes, Colin?
I was gonna ask the same thing, but it'd be your question. When's the last time the property's been assessed at all for safety? And what it needs to just stabilize so it doesn't deteriorate further? Does anyone know the last time it's been inspected or they were?
You'd have to, uh, we'd have to ask Jason for.
So a lot of people, uh, I mean, who do home improvements, especially after a home, that really busy right now.
Mm-hmm.
But typically, they don't charge you for their assessment.
Mm-hmm.
They will come out in the hopes of getting the job and they will say, we recommend this, we recommend this, we recommend this. I don't think it's gonna hurt to start that conversation with someone, just so you have some numbers. So it's not like, so, because maybe the sills are all rotten and maybe restoring the sills is gonna be, you know, it's not a lot of perspective with the.
Okay. Yeah. Makes sense. All right. Um, was that it? What are these other things I see here? A, B, C, D, did we do those? We did those? All right, I think we're good then. Anyone else before? No, we're good.
You're trying, you're trying to cut me off?
Yep. Why? You got something to say?
Uh, I, I'm not about this. Uh, I just had a question for Chris. But it'll wait until we're done with, uh.
Good point. All right, so we're gonna close the meeting at seven forty-two. Meeting is adjourned. We sign, yes, we did.
Thank you.
What, the Palmer paper you're talking, no?
He's talking about Weston, that's all signed.
Yes, we signed that. Sorry, we did that before you guys got here.
So, we're gonna be, uh, Thursday morning.
Okay, okay.
I'll have to be there. We'll do it here.
Can I just make a smart comment?
Thursday morning, so there's a there.
If you don't, I will.
So that way.
So, we, we're okay with putting money into Shepherd Farm? I just threw it out there. I chose to wait until the meeting was over.
Karen, Jason and I walked that in, uh, the fall of twenty, Josh asked us to go look at the building.
Yeah.
And at the time, well, the roof was shot, the windows were starting to fail, but the foundation was stone. And the timber that probably went down in the seventeen hundreds had started to shift.
Yeah.
So, but it's still sitting on there.
It's a money pit. We should have never taken it. And so now everyone's okay with us putting money into it? But no, they'll build a fire department. Like, come on. That's ridiculous.
And then Jason would know better, but when we walked through it, I told him to mix Brennan.
Years ago, eight years ago, when I did this, and why that's happened, I will never know. Because it would be the best thing for that building to run of it. Go ahead, they would have done a beautiful job with it, I'm sure.
This town hangs through a movie about a house like that.
Oh, so frustrating. And it's like, I feel like everyone's gonna yell at the select board if we hope to put money into it.
Oh, yeah. They'll, they'll be, why are you throwing good money at that?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so last week.